Would you like to give us the name of the guest?
If I had to tell them, I'd thank them for this guy. I'd probably be like, for a time to go out and come back and be more than a part of our community. I pray for each person, Lord, that's saved, that's loved, one that I've heard you give them mercy in the grace of their name. I pray that you just go with us during this meeting, God, God our fathers, God our descendants, God our descendants, God, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pray that you use the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like to give the gentleman that wrote the recovery report?
Yeah.
Yeah, correct, Amendment 7A to add Clinton Jones and Bethany Leonard to speak. President of the General.
My name is.
How about that?
Sir.
All right. The President of the Menage Workshop and Regular, that little twenty, going to get on our record, twenty seven, I don't know. My name is today, all right. One, two, eight, sixty-five.
Good afternoon.
Oh.
I come before you again to ask permission to apply for the WAP grant for 2022. The two levitations for this grant will be nineteen, one hundred and nineteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. And I just need a signature from Mr. Pete Mather and Mr. Farland.
Now, if I should refer this. Sir. All right. You're on top.
Good day. I just came to give thanks for the equipment that just helped us get in the last few months of sanitation. We really appreciate it, but we need to work with you. The truck, you know, got hit by a lot. I've got a headache today that we think it's just a IV, a pass sensor, and won't be most likely a recovery lab, so we might have to do it in the machine. I didn't see it against the mic, yes. The bed cabinet ain't coming yet, CES, definitely, halfway. I'm not sure about what was on the reception. I've got no idea if you can use time.
Now for the work recovery program.
Yeah, I think she's here. She's there.
My name is Bethany Leonard, and I'm a community social services technician with Grand County Health Department. And I'm also certified business or specialist. And I'm a part of the Recovery to Work Program at the health department. So, a little bit about what Recovery to Work is, is it is a program where we help people in early recovery, they're coming out of rehabilitation, like rehab, detox, or jail, to find employment is the first piece. And there are people that are in early recovery that aren't coming out of those places, and we also help them to find employment. And on the business or special side, we also are out to help clients that are maybe still struggling with issues, terror, barriers, and their life, and help them move toward a path of recovery. Right now, I've started twelve clients so far. And ten out of twelve, ten participated in either maintenance, assisted treatment, therapy, or recovery groups, or to Littleton Community Health Center, and Celebrate Recovery at East Romeo to that. Also, twenty-five times participants have been either given access to their funds that we can use, or refer to other resources like housing, cell phones, or home cars, legal aid, domestic law shelters, online shelters, personal care items, prescriptions, food, clothing, primary care, Medicaid, food stamps, first tickets, social security cards, the transit, those programs. And also, any new or added clients I have for those who are working, and I'm helping them to sustain their employment and to, if they run into problems at work, and help them work through those problems in order to keep that job. I have like a project status report on how my program's going so far at the back on the table, also a flyer about recovery period support services, which me and Clinton Jones have contacted us and what we do on the back table, as well as a overview of the Recovery to Work grant and program in its entirety on the back table.
Thank you, my friend. Thank you, my friend. My name is Clint Jones, I'd like to say I already know you. I run the LEAD program, is Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program. Got about thirty-two people that I'm working with at the moment. Same thing as what she just told you, when we have to find work, getting the treatment, or any kind of support they need in order to make a change in their life. But that we're bound to, you know, they gotta want to, you know, it's decisions, you know, it's up to them. Got several success stories, actually got, got one that, you know, got him, I got him in jail, and I work with people some probation. Got one that got him out of jail, well, what he got about, got him to go up on town, and he got housed and everything, all been clean for a month, so, you know, the program works just a matter of whether they want it or not. That's pretty much it, I mean, we just start with work, and I do any way we can, but like I say, they got one, so, that's pretty much it.
All right, thank you, my friend. Good day, brother, call this. Would you like, actually, go down, be on the line, but, come on, I'll head back.
I'll try not to do that. Everybody here does know that I'm called Preach. That's what God called him to do, Preacher's word, the wind, salt, to do, Jesus Christ. I don't, I'd really rather not be up here speaking, to be honest with you, I used to speak on behalf of the people, but I just concern cities, in our county, really troubled right now about what's going on in our county. We know we have new drugs around here. It's killing people. Those moms and baddies that talk about having murder their youngs. And we appreciate these programs. We appreciate Celebrate Recovery, my team at the church, and all of my things trying to do in this country. And I'm certain that my team can get up here tonight and tell you as well as I, that nobody's gonna get help until they want help. We're very thankful for people that won't help, that'll go with these programs. But I believe tonight, the concern of the citizens is not those that's interested in the program, it's those that's out here, that's living recklessly, that's selling drugs to our young people, that's putting this stuff out here on the streets, available to them, that's killing them. And we didn't come here tonight to point fingers at our commissioners, we didn't come here tonight to point fingers at our law enforcement. But you said we come here together tonight to work together with you, that's why we're here. We want to offer, as a community, and there's so many more people in this right here that's concerned, so many more that stands behind what this group is standing for tonight, in the fact of wanting to do something in our community. And I'm gonna be honest with you, and I'll just tell you the truth, I don't know what to do. We have some ideas. This drug problem's great. I live in it, I know what it is, and it's so much worse than it was when I was out there. I realize today, you take one drug dealer off the street, and there'll probably be two more taking his place tomorrow. But one thing that we do feel like, with all of our heart, and I believe everybody here, is that we need stricter laws. And, and they're lessening the laws. We had a meeting with Ashley Welch and some others a couple years ago, and she stated to show us how that the laws have been lessened, and how that the judges went by a certain order of things. But we see people here in this county, and I'm not trying to point fingers, because I'm one of the sorriest things that ever come through this county, I'm just saved by the grace of God, the Lord's only good thing about me. But we see people here in this county that has been living and doing the same thing for a long time, and we want to know how that we can come together. Is there any way that your citizens can help? Is there anything that we can do for our church department? Some people worry about money, and I know you guys have a budget in meeting on Friday. And I know money's something that's, is responsibility to manage it, manage it properly, and the Bible teaches to make excuses, but really, in truthfully, if we could somehow help our law enforcement, or if we could somehow better our law enforcement to help with this drug problem, I believe it'd be worth budgeting in somehow. I don't know what you're gonna do, I couldn't even, I'll be honest, I couldn't even start to do something, I'm not good at stuff like that. I don't know how you guys manage all that and budget it, but would it not be good to maybe put some more money towards something to fight against this drug problem and take it away from something else that wasn't as important? I don't know what that could be, like I said, I'm not saying, I know it's a concern of the people, we have heard, and we have seen it with our own eyes. I'm not certain what Cherokee County plays, or what Bryson City plays, or law enforcement, I'm not certain about that, I can look into it if you guys don't want to. I don't know how much I would make, I've heard. But here's the thing, they say as soon as we get deputies trained up, that they leave us to go work for the tribe.
What about law to do that? They, you know, that part of the law.
I'm saying, maybe, maybe we could offer a little more for our law, maybe they need some assistance, maybe they, I don't know, it's just something we could look at, but this is probably stuff you guys have thought about, I mean, you guys probably done looked at, I, I don't know, it's just things that I've been approached with. We realize that drugs is a thing that people does, most of the time, there's an underlying issue. Broken homes is an awful thing in our area, we know that in the water, broken homes, it's devastating children, children are growing up in a mess, it's been brought to my attention just about some of the situations that kids are growing up in in this county. Once again, I don't know what we can do about that. Do you know what we can do about it? What we're asking to work together, I, I don't know, I mean, there's so many questions, so many needs, so many things here in our county, that we just feel like that we need help with, but the drugs are being dealt, I mean, in, in open, broad daylight, I mean, transactions going on in town, right now, you go through town, and our town is covered up with drugs, I mean, it's everywhere you look, and, and we just want to know what, what can we do, I mean, what, what can we do? Can these citizens help in some way, the law enforcement?
Amen, brother.
I don't, I don't know what the answer is, I really don't. I'm a concerned citizen, I've not lost a child, but I've stood over a lot of caskets of my friends. Jacob played with me, and you went scoping. I've tried to talk to a lot of people I finished in jail, and I know for a fact that nobody's gonna get no help until they want it. And I'm a firm believer that it takes God.
Amen, brother.
We need people in our churches. I look around, and I say this, I say, I hope that all of you concerned people that's here tonight, I'm just gonna focus on me, I hope you attend the church somewhere, I hope that you pray to God, because God is the answer. When they die in our homes, when they die in our hearts, when they die in our communities. I love Grand County. Have you ever seen a place where when something happens, that people don't just come together to hang? Hang in a wonderful place? I love Grand County. I thank God for our county, I thank God for our people. I'm certain that there's corruption on every level, every system that they are, that's not about my father, I'm certain there's corruption. I would rather say that there's corruption in our law enforcement.
Amen, brother.
I'm just, I'm just saying, there's always, where there's man, there's corruption. In the justice system, we know there's corruption, unfortunately, in our churches, there's corruption. Where you have man, there'll always be corruption. We know that, we're aware of that. We're just trying to see what, what is it that we can do as a concerned community? Like I said, my, my concern is winning people to the Lord. I don't wanna get up here tonight and turn a bunch of people against me, but they'd never come to sway young minds in this church, but they'd never have any use for me, they'd never say something like that. I'm here because I love people, and because we want to help people. I know you guys don't like, there's nobody here, nobody here that's fighting has not benefited by drugs.
Great struggle. If we're born here, raise our hand, does not have from a nephew, or a niece, the land.
The fighting is figuring out something to do about it, I mean, I, I told them, I met with them before, come up here, I talked to them, I didn't, I didn't wanna talk. I didn't want to, because I don't know what to do, other than to turn to God, but I do know we take things that we can do. We've got state representatives and a DA coming in, Friday, I know you guys have a budget, meeting Friday, I don't know how long Mike's gonna like, staff meetings at three o'clock at the school, and I think the people would appreciate the commissioners, if you guys could, to make it out to that, let's hear what we can do, working together. I don't understand the logistics of everything, I'm not that smart, I don't even understand why God called me Preach, but I love people.
Amen.
I'm tired of seeing destruction and death. We've tried, I've tried to help people, you've tried to help people, but we know we're living in a small town, and we know that so many times, things get overlooked, we know so many times, I'm gonna be honest with you, I went to the clerk of court college for the whole, I did that for a day. All right, could you help me? Probably, I don't know if anybody else would admit that. I would say that takes people that might not be walking out in the courthouse, but I would say that takes people, maybe in a room behind a closed door somewhere, could you help my son, could you help my daughter get out of these drug charges? I'm just saying, we see a lot of things, we know, we know, we feel like they need to be stricter laws, I mean, they've voted in and legalized my law on the tribe. How long will it be until we're legalizing drugs in our state, in our county?
Great struggle.
We were down here not long ago, fighting against alcohol. We stood firmly against it, I stand firmly against it today. It was pious from the town alderman to the county commissioners, to the town alderman. Nobody wanted to just, I can't imagine the position you're in, that's why I don't wanna be political, I don't wanna be, but I've got to stand with God, I'll stand with God until I die.
Amen, brother.
I'm not here trying to make nobody mad, this is a group of concerned citizens that love their county.
Great struggle.
That's tired of seeing people walk up and down the road, strung out of their mind, that's tired of seeing the same ones, that's been selling drugs for ten, fifteen, twenty-five years, and everybody knows it. You know it, I know it, we know it. Many of them have been arrested many times, still out there today. Is there corruption in our justice system without a shadow of a doubt?
Great struggle.
We have, we have people that have killed people, that's walking loose in Grand County right now.
Amen, brother.
We have people with mental issues that should not be on the streets, that's out of the body. We're asking you, what can we do to help?
Amen, brother.
We have a hard time, here's your manager, Maggie Smith, here with us tonight, she's part of the center, by her account, she's been researching for this for quite a while, I have papers here showing from 2019 in May to 2020 of May, in a year's time, the number of overdoses that the ambulances were called out to, and the number of Narcan that has been used, and it's ninety-four to eighty-four.
Amen, brother.
That means them other ones died. Now, you know, I hate to say this like this, sometimes when somebody dies, and it don't hit their post home, you can be honest, you might say, boy, it's awful, I hate that happen.
Great struggle.
We've got a little llama sitting here tonight.
Great.
One of our church members, a lady who lives right across from our church, her husband, they've laid their children to rest this year. It's heartbreaking, reading her nineteen-year-old son, it's heartbreaking, it's devastating. Is there anything that we can do that would not be worth one more young person not dying?
Name it, brother, name it.
Jacob, I don't, I don't know what to say, I made it with everything that's in me, I'm trying to be as humble as I know I am, or not for the sake, we're here to help. Those people that said that they're set up on community watches, those people that said they'll do anything they can to aid this law enforcement, we have financial, we've been told by Carl Gillespie, that there is financial aid available in Rock.
Great struggle.
And what's it gonna take to get a hold of that? Somebody smarter than me knowing what to do, there's grants, we need mental health now, I mean, these people that are doing the, there's something wrong. When I done drugs, there was something wrong, my drugs wasn't a problem, there was an underlying issue, there's something wrong. Our families are broken, our homes are broken, our systems are broken, our people are broken. I would have made you with everything in me, and earned you more than any time tonight, it would have been good for us to just come here and fall down on our backs and call out to God.
Great struggle.
Even more than I, than, than any system, or any program, or anything can, I realize we're living in the last days, I realize that there's corruption all around us, I realize that the drugs are rampant, but just as a concerned citizen, a concerned community, a concerned people, what can we do?
Great struggle.
If they wanna help our law enforcement, all that they can.
Great, yes.
What about a drug task force? I mean, there, there's so many things, I have things right here. Several people wrote saying that somehow we need stricter laws. Megan, she said she's willing to help in any way, with any kind of mental health issues, she's willing, she said, to go get more education, she needs to. We need some kind of service, I, I don't know what lines is with the new jail, I don't know, I mean, I'd say the full before, huh?
Yep.
We probably can't bail one big enough.
Great struggle.
As crime goes unnoticed every day, not enough deputies to respond to everything that's going on.
Yes, sir. What needs done? What needs done? Listen. Let's do this.
There ain't nobody here blaming none, I want you to think that, ain't nobody blaming none.
I'm not a big brother, I mean, I've done a big break for the last three, four years. Kevin Corby called me on the phone, I explained, this week, if money is what we need for God, we can get it, that's what we're thinking, we've been here this whole way, if money's watching, that, that's a lot of money sitting back here. Lead us. Do it.
That's what we got you in there for.
Do it.
Lead us, help us, we'll help God in every way we can.
Do it.
It's just awful, and it's like they said, hitting on the floor, it's hard, getting calls, we all just do, like, we've been doing it for years, we all just say, I hate that, that's not a helpful word. When it starts here, like you have Maria and Nick's family, I mean, it feels like it's here.
Great struggle.
Do it, let's do something, come on, wake it, come on, get this, it got nothing to do with Democrats, Republicans, this ain't got nothing to do with nothing.
Amen, brother.
Look here, let's, let's help one another.
Do it.
That's not a happy life, because that's a lot, this, this ain't actually, it's, I mean, we're up for anything.
Do it.
Well, whatever we can do, we'll do. Come to that, mate, please, look here, put the budget, mate, off, put it off, Friday.
Be off your head, just go at three o'clock, ain't three o'clock here?
It's three o'clock, listen, be there at three o'clock, these people, they said they bringing the DA with, they're bringing, it's, no, man, what's your time? Yeah, wanna talk to you? Kevin Corby, look here, if y'all are there, y'all, y'all know what to ask, I mean, listen, me and Patrick can talk in front of that paper.
Do it.
If somebody here begins to know what it is, it's grand, because that God, he literally told me on the telephone, I mean, tell me, he said, look, listen, if it's money, we've got it here in Rock, we're just gonna get it. Let's do something, come on, we can, come on, get this, it got nothing to do with Democrats or Republicans, this ain't got nothing to do with nothing.
Amen brother!
Look here, let's help one another.
Do it!
That's not a happy life. Cause that's a lot, this, this ain't actually, it's not. I mean, we're up for anything.
Do it!
So, whatever we can do, we'll do. Come to that, mate, please, look here, put the budget, mate, off. Put it off. Friday. Be off your head, just go at three o'clock, ain't three o'clock here? It's three o'clock, listen. Be there at three o'clock, these people, they said they bringing the DA with. They're bringing, uh, it's... No man, what's your time? Yeah, wanna talk to you? Kevin Corby? Look here, if y'all are there, y'all know what to ask. I remember, listen, me and Patrick can't talk in front of that paper.
Do it!
Do it! If somebody here begins to know what it is, it's grand. Look, if they got it, he literally told me on the telephone, I didn't tell him anything. He said, look, listen, if it's money, we've got it here in Rock. We're just trying to get it in. He said, set up Rock, what am I going to do? Let's do something, let's start right here, and let this lead off to these other camps. Because you can't even stop it right here, I mean, they just go to Andrews.
Yes sir!
It's getting bigger and bigger and bigger before they just let it go.
Yes sir!
I don't like it, I don't like it, I'm a lot of hate in the market. But this can just keep getting bigger and bigger and bigger. Something that's changed since me and Patrick was doing it around twenty years ago, is it was always hard to go here to go get, you know what I'm talking about? I mean, you did it, if you're not, you had to go somewhere like Atlanta.
Praise brother!
Hutton!
For God! Do it!
You know, let's work together. And thank you. It's all valuable anymore, I mean, I picked a boy up the other night that I used to run around with, I picked him up at the Big Dean and Marv, his car had been stolen, he was walking in the forest, getting robbed. I mean, Carter's cop been talking to me about that beyond my, he said, if they get a good sheriff, he said, they vote him out. He said, and then the other ones get caught up in corruption. And I, so, I'm gonna go, wait this, wait this thing to do something, I, I don't know. We're asking you to help us.
Praise brother! Amen!
First, I just want to say, I'm here to register for a SP here, he's in his annual military ordaining, national ordaining. But we've tried to put together some ideas when we, when we were approached by this group that were trying to help us. And of course, I know budget's a big thing, and it's hard, we've got a big budget. You know, if you just look at the dollars, but our budget, you know, a million, four hundred thousand, six hundred, four hundred, sixty-five thousand dollars, seems like a lot of money. But you got, Wayne County right next door, about our same size, got a two million, nine million dollar budget. It's forty thousand dollars less than being done by us. And I know, I know it's tough, I know money's hard to come by, they've got thirty officers, and they've got Dyson City PD. We need more officers to be able to patrol the county adequately. Our patrol spends a lot of their time just answering calls, calls for service, which limits their active patrol for crimes being committed, also crime prevention. Already this year, we've had thirty-eight hundred and sixty-one officers for our sheriff's office. Of that, then our officers have spent twenty-seven hundred and forty-five hours on those calls. And it's only thirty-three, estimated thirty-three hundred and sixty hours in five months' time. So eighty-two percent of the time, our officer has been on calls, the rest of them, eighteen percent of the time, we're out here, we can't, we can't prevent, we're all in a, reacting to it. And we need more people to do that. Right now, county sheriff, we have twenty-one officers, that sounds like a lot, I know. But we have four detectives that carry twenty-five average active cases all the time, each one of them dead. Over a hundred active cases they're carrying all the time between the four of them. We have two guys that work narcotics full-time, and to get narcotics convictions is tough, you've got to put a lot of work into it. And we've done that, and we don't understand why they don't get convictions. For they're dismissed to indict, and then we never see an indictment on the cases. So we, that's stuff we need to work with the DA on. And we're not putting them out either, we want to work with everybody. We're not here at the sheriff's office trying to offend y'all's commissioners, or trying to, to make it to where it's harder on y'all, we want to work with y'all. We, we, the only way that we can be successful at this is if we work with y'all, y'all work with this group,
Yes sir!
And we're all together as a county.
Yes sir!
Many, there's many crimes now involved with use of computers, use of phones and all that, we don't have the equipment to properly investigate it, we have to reach out to nature accountants. And then, of course, with them, they have to handle their, their cases first, so our cases get delayed, get delayed. So that's something we need to work on, we need the equipment, software, and such to be able to handle any crime that comes through our doors. We want to be the best for our community that we can be, and serve them to the best of our ability. We don't want to be a department that only responds to, responds to crimes after they've happened. If we had more officers that would help us to be able to be proactive and more aggressive with defining the drug problems plaguing the county. All the theft, the B and Es, or everything is ninety-five percent drug-related. We attack the drug problem, we fix our other problems. If we don't, if we get, don't get more aggressive, we continue to have more overdoses than possible. And one is too many, I can't imagine what it's feeling to feel like. I know it was hard, we got to, and I said how proud, and I never want to say that again, but we had, we got, and we got to put up with it. The past felt like the error of the sheriff's office was a necessary thing, it really was wanted in your respects. That's how our churches failed at times, but it's time for us all coming together for our great county, and not let our county suffer for us not doing it. We're not natives anymore, crimes evolve, and if we're going to stay ahead of it, we have to evolve as well. We can't be law enforcement from the past, we have to use all the tools available to slow down crime and protect our citizens. Not adequately funding law enforcement is something that's not an option in this day and time. Most people have no idea what all goes on in our office, or what all we deal with daily. We're starting to have a lot of people from out of the county come in and stealing here. Several times just in the last few weeks, we've had, we've made several arrests for people from Andrews trying to steal their stuff here. We don't have enough people to cover it, we just don't. This makes us appear weak as a county, as law enforcement, and draws those people to us. And we are, we are, we don't have enough to cover. We need to honestly be able to cover the county more, we need six people. We need three on each shift at night to tighten this place up and be more aggressive with it. I know that's asking a lot, in our budget this year we presented to y'all, we asked for one additional deputy. Because we know it's our own job to try to come up with the money for this stuff. But I think looking back and looking forward at it, if we don't spend the money, our county's not going to be the place that we love and we, we want it today. The jail was mentioned, we can't continue to put off building in the jail, that's got to be a top priority. We, at times, and this is on truth, we can arrest people at times because we have nowhere to send them whatsoever, we have nowhere to house them. We've been using so long, once we used them in the past, now have an overcrowded problem of their own. Clay County, they will let us have one male and one female, it's all they'll house for us. And at times, we have to transport inmates all the way to Tulsa or Rutherford to get them housed, and that's just not acceptable. It's too far, it's all the miles we're putting vehicles, the hours, we're having to pay people, so, I mean, it's just ridiculous. The longer we continue to put off building in jail, in courthouse, the more expensive it will be. We need fifty bags now. It's not entirely to the vehicles, for us not to arrest people at the lack of space. And we're in this with y'all, commissioner, we want you to try to help us start this problem, instead of us having to turn people out. Cause that's definitely not a solution, it only creates more crime. These people are reoffending hours after they get out. He got out, he went into jail about nine-thirty, he was out by twelve-thirty, he was arrested again at four-thirty for stealing again, and he just got out three hours, three, four hours earlier. I mean, we've got to be able to keep these people in them, and if we've got a place to keep them, our magistrates and our judges won't have to release their bonds, adopt their bonds to unsecure, if they know that we've got a place to keep them. But they, a lot of the time, the only reason they do that is because they know they're cool. And like I said, these other places, they, they're full of them. One of the things too, and this is, this is just why I'm saying we need these officers, it's not necessarily related to the drug problem, but the increased motorcycle and car traffic we have, you know, during the summer, we need more officers to be able to address unsafe movements of them groups. These officers, let's keep our officers very busy in the summer months, we need to be able to saturate one-twenty-nine, twenty-eight, and slow these people down. The reckless action dangers our local people, and we can't have them doing that. And if we do that, and we get after them, we start charging them more, hopefully, you know, maybe some radar or something, slow them down, that'll bring more revenue into the county as well. But most importantly, is to make our roads safer for our Grand Canyon residents. The number one goal of our officers and the commissioners has to be to make our county safe, cutting funding and not adequately funding us has a very dangerous outcome. The bigger cities that are seeing huge increases in violent crimes that have done that, Asheville city is now down to six officers per shift. They've had eighty-seven either apply for retirement or leave their agencies this year. So, I mean, it's, it's not going to be good, and we have to, we have to have a united front together, it can't be us against you or you against us. We have to be in this battle together. If we want things to stay this way, we have to get more arrests, we're going after the drug pushers and the thieves. We know, we need all the churches and pray the people to pray for the drug users, that God will intervene in their lives, and let them accept the Lord's help. We need people to pray for our officers when they're out here. I attended last week, the county was two officers in boot, and it was a, it was a hard thing to see. We can't, we can't not pray and protect our officers, they haven't had the equipment that they need to be able to protect themselves. With a united front by the entire county, we can make a difference. I'll do all I can, and I could, and I could, I can do to make sure that any county funds are not spent on frivolous stuff, that we're good stewards of your county money, and that we do everything we can to make our county safer. And if we can make our county safer, I don't know who better to use the funds. And I think as a group, I know me as a taxpayer, I don't care if it happens, increase my taxes to be able to keep me safe. If you want to do whatever you have to do, give money to us, and I, it's,
Amen brother!
We've got, we've got to be able to do more to protect our people.
Amen brother!
The city of Andrews and the shape it's in right now, it's, I don't know how many y'all go over there and know anything about it, but it's vast. They're not a huge drug plant.
Amen brother!
The thing number here, we've got a lot here that's doing the same thing, and it's going to get worse. If you come through town from ten o'clock to two AM, you've got zombies walking all over the place.
Walking straight, yes sir, amen brother!
If you come through town from ten o'clock to two AM, you've got zombies walking all over the place.
Walking straight, yes sir, amen brother!
Get these people help, or either give them incarceration or, we can't continue to allow this, cause they're going to get run over, people are going to get killed.
Yes sir!
And it's on us if we're not doing our, our part.
Praise brother!
Really, that's, that's all I have, I want is that the officer group, I hope that we can work together and make a difference. And unfortunately, the only, the only outcome I see of being able to help is with funds and more people. I mean, I know it seems like for a small county, twenty officers is a lot, but when you see what we're going through every day, and you see our number of calls, that eighty-two percent of our time spent just answering calls, it don't leave us much time to be able to protect the people when they have to give the reports and everything. It's very, very minimal coverage we get, and we can't become a county that's weak in our law enforcement, because when we do, then at that point, it will get bad, and it will be a lot worse than it is. I thank y'all, thank y'all for listening to me, and again, any way in the world that we can work with you, or I can work with you, to try to better our county and industry, anything we can do, we're open for ideas. We, the only thing we want is just like what they want, we want a better community, we want a safer community, and we want these people off the streets, and hopefully, they're better.
Yes sir! Amen brother!
Can I hand on the bed?
Yes sir!
So, what chief, I don't want to be mine, I'm the chief investigator over here. For chief, talking about Andrews, I know a lot of you know the problems Andrews has with the police department, they have had, it's been very hard sometimes. Police chief, chief told us here for a little while. The reason Andrews is so bad right now, the dopers and the drug users and neighbors saw it up here. They saw that Andrews had a weak, and sometimes no police department at all, and then knew that they could just move right. If you have an area that doesn't have a strong police presence, a strong police force, where they know, if we go over there, we're going to get caught. Then they're just going to keep moving. Couple weeks ago, we got eight ounces coming into the county, that's half a pound of meth coming into this county. And Cherokee County is seeing kilos of dope now. So when they're seeing that much, it's going to start flowing over here more and more. So it's, it's not going to stop the drug company, talking about corruption, all the drugs that come up from Mexico, there's too many crooked politicians that are making money off of that. And they're not going to let it stop.
Right.
So, a strong police presence and force, a show of force is the only way you're going to fight, that's not the problem.
Is the FBI, is the FBI not enough? Sorry, is the FBI, FBI not enough?
So the FBI, they're, just like a lot of agencies, they're short right now, there's two FBI for the western part of North Carolina.
National West, and we, you know, they, again, there's people here to govern the work, you know, they have community, they have operations with us. We probably can get a murder, any, it's very minimal staff and we're going to have to be able to do whatever we need to do as an office to protect the county and everyone else.
I've had a member for a little while here, and I'm working on the twelfth year term altogether. And almost every year, we've been faced with the same problem, is we've got the budget. Almost every year, and number of employees. I don't know how many here. And it still gets the same time. And now we're faced, the court's going to make Grand County, the citizens of Grand County are going to have to build a justice center and jail. Started out, estimate fifteen million, now they caught COVID, they're caught like twenty-one million, twenty-two. So that's what we're faced with, sitting up here behind this back. Our back already is about the highest in the state. Our biggest problem is, we have thirty percent of our county that we can tax, the rest of it belongs to the government or someone else, so there's not enough money out there for us. For the grants out there, we need to know about it.
Yeah, and hopefully Friday we'll get information on this, on all of that, things with them. We have reached out to four of the names listed ago, and requested stuff from them, we requested money for bike cams, we've requested money for repeaters in our cars to get their regular shows. And we've also been a representative cop for one, has reached out to us, and we went through him and asked him for the same things. And they're trying, they're trying to give us money as well, he called us and asked what he could do. So hopefully, we're going to see something like that come again, and it'll help too. We're just trying to figure out a way to better ourselves.
There's very little. I understand that if you don't catch the salary, you ain't going to stop the youth.
Yeah.
That's all we're talking about.
Yeah. Anybody got anything else to say?
Well, I have, can you use money that you get for, like, for opioid grants, or drug grants, or other things like that, to help fund the police?
We, we apply for all kinds of grants, we're applying right now for a grant through, to Max, I believe, is the company, they, the bigulators in police corps. We've got a lot of time, we're just sending the four amateurs away, or we're using the bigulator about a hundred same people. So we're, we're, we're not getting them, so we hopefully going to, we apply, we're hopefully going to get that grant on down next month, and we'll get a safe bigulator. So we're reaching out, trying to make ourselves better everywhere.
Now, what's the problem?
Why don't we have a town, why don't we have a town plate?
I bet, now we're all about it. Well, the counties have a problem, see the street, and our government, they can't control them, we have to sit and tame, which is a lot of problem. Let's get the town, we got plenty of money coming in, let's do something about it.
We, we've requested them several times to at least provide us with one deputy and one car, they did, they snowbunted whatsoever, the town hall. And I know that the statistics I'm giving you right here were from about four years ago, but four years ago, seventy-six percent of our calls were in the city. So, I mean, they need to be helped.
Who would have thought we got something like that? I'm not a big guy.
You ever seen State House, Sean Adams, Ricky Davis, and the people, that's the four of them. They give us, they give us.
What's the problem? Is it money? Is money the problem? Right? Nate, is that the problem? Is money the problem?
I just want to say something, so.
Somebody asked me, and said, yes, money is the problem. Because we don't have enough money to fund enough officers, to fund enough this, to fund enough that.
We don't have money to pay officers, we don't have money to pay this, we don't have... Money makes the world go round. Can anybody disagree with me? Yes ma'am?
I would, ma'am. I would.
Disagree with me, ma'am?
How it is, is how it is. The facts are that no matter how much money they send in the poor communities, they just get more, they just expand, they just get bigger. They just say they trust them. It just is what it is.
It is what it is. Yes ma'am, I would agree with you.
Let me tell you this, honey. About eight or nine years ago, I started a 501(c)(3) nonprofit ministry. And they made me do, IRS made me do all kinds of things. So I had to do a lot of research. And you know what? I found rehabs that get a ninety percent rate of not going back to drugs. Guess where it's at? It's only in the Christian ones. It's only, out of all of the research we did, only Christian organizations got any results. And it was eighty and ninety percent. My son-in-law went to a place that had something like seventy-five percent. They don't go back to drugs after they leave there. If we're gonna do this, you know what? You feel serious about what you're saying, somebody's getting good results. And any intelligent person, I used to, you guys, and I love you too, I'm like you, I love, I love these people. But y'all don't understand, we gotta do something and you have all this power. It's time to leave the chair and open up and you guys start voting people that get something done. And it ain't that y'all are bad, it's that you've been steeped in this stuff and you don't think out of the box. People don't think out of the box. Who's getting the result you want? This place is getting the result we want. Well then, why aren't we doing what they do? Why aren't we doing it? Why aren't your kids in these programs? Why is the school system teaching these kids to rely? And I'm gonna go there, teaching people to get vaccines and do all this stuff, they don't even know what they're doing. Those vaccines have things in them that harm you and they harm your kids. And they start at birth, right there when my baby granddaughter was born, five pounds, they gave her a cotton picking vaccine, but she never got enough. Because once my son-in-law got a clue, he said, wait a minute, this is crazy. These things that are coming up, you don't hear about it. Because they don't want you to know about it. You serious? You contact me, I'll help with it, but carry on here. I'll let you go. But I want a solution for New York.
Yeah, my name is Joe, and I'm saying, I really push y'all apart, but anyhow, I love this community. And I've been thinking about this, trying to figure out what's going on here with this country. It's a horrible problem and we need a lot more law enforcement. Law enforcement does need to have more support in this. But the Bible says that idle hands are the devil's workshop. And I think what this community needs is a recreation center for these young people. These young people, these children, this community have nothing to do, they have no place to go, no place to hang out. So they hang out on the streets and they hang out somewhere where they can buy drugs. If we had a community center where people with a swimming pool, places where the young people could go and have something to do other than sit and watch television and play with their cell phones, have something constructive to do and have programs there that could channel their energy into an area that is productive rather than channel it off into something like drugs, then I think that would be one of the solutions to this problem. If young people don't have anything to do, they're gonna find something to do. And so they need, well, I think we really are a recreation center now. No, we're talking a lot of money. It costs a lot of money to build one of these things and then it's gotta be maintained and kept up over time. And so where's that money gonna come from? Well, I don't know anything about where that money's coming from, but I know that in this country right now, there is a river of money flowing through this country, an absolute river. If we can find a way, just to cut a little channel off of it and get money for what we need, law enforcement, a community center, a recreation center, things that we need, that money is out there. And there's a way to find it. I don't have any idea what that would be, but I know there's a way to find it. But you know, we all realize there's a big problem, but we all need to be thinking about what can be a solution. And law enforcement's a big one, but we gotta do something for these children to get them steered in a different direction rather than going off and drug. The only thing, actually, the only thing that's in my mind is to have a recreation center, a larger one, a good one, and give these young people something to do. Well, that's all I got to say.
What do you think? Yeah, but...
Hold on, get right to say, after we make trial, then maybe you have to promote you to make it with the community.
I'm on both sides. One, they can contact, dial the phone, we will try to do that. I would say this, we appreciate your time, we apologize for anything inappropriate, we do, but we appreciate your time, listen to us, we want to work together, we hope to try to teach representatives, try to be able to help us and act the right way, like the government can hold that money. Essentially, we're right there. Now, unfortunately, we're a small old county, we're not just overlooked over here in western North Carolina. We've got Charlotte and Raleigh and Green, I went inside them, all that and that. And that's probably more looked at than us up here. That's why we're supposed to have people like Paul, the lesbian, Martin, Tom, Kevin Porter. So let's see what they'll do for us.
They talk for employment, they give you a thank you, and I will say, I will just have to say, they talk for employment, Kevin Porter.
We appreciate your listening, help us, sorry to interrupt you, everybody.
know, about fairness and bidding for different contractors through that section. The section Charlie Bravo is from Five Point Road to Beach Creek. It's about four miles. Section Charlie Bravo, North Carolina, one forty-three from Beach Creek to the Appalachian Trail at the top of Seacoal Mountain. It's about three point nine miles. And section Charlie, Charlie will be from the Appalachian Trail and it says to Gap Road, which is a little bit before you get to where Free Grocery House is, and then to the corner of the pole line. Go to that portal, that would be my assumption, that's four miles. And the most important thing is what a lot of people wanna know is, what DMT is shooting for is a right-of-way acquisition for that Charlie Bravo first section going from Five Point to Beach Creek in August of twenty-one this year. And then the land would be August of twenty-twenty-two for that first section. And I'm sure it'll be, it'll be, continue to be repetitive after that on the other sections. It's potentially, probably could be acquisition while they're doing, they have one land, that sort of thing, but we'll find more information out, so we'll be best for that. And I went ahead and provided that information to you guys, and if you want to come with me. If there's no questions, I'll move on to item two, which is the budget workshops. As everyone knows, I wanna make sure that we're still on schedule. Ms. Garland will have a rough draft to meet for the budget by May twentieth. And a target date for public hearing adoption is set to be June fifteen, twenty-one, during the regular scheduled committee shows meeting. We will start the workshops this Friday at zero-nine. Ms. Garland, I would assume we'll do it in back in our office spaces or are we gonna do it in here? We're gonna do it in here, that's right, you're right, I'm gonna do it in here. We'll be back in here, start them on that Friday. They'll go Friday, May twenty-first, May twenty-eighth, June fourth, and June eleventh. And right now, they started at zero-nine and then roughly we had a time of zero-two, but that's, as everyone knows, they'll go as of the evening. Obviously, this Friday, we'll make an exception, we need to stop to be waiting to be on that. I'll plan to be there as well. There's nothing more on that, I'll move on to item three, the transfer station. We were having a lot of good information coming back to us about the transfer station and that, but they come out and do the assessment. Draft assessment was provided April twenty-seventh to myself, Ms. Garland, and sanitation director Gavin Carter, from Jay Zimmerman, he's a regulatory compliance. And a statement from him was overall facility was well-run with no significant issues in that area. And we provided, he provided us with that initial draft. Obviously, we're gonna look that over and Gavin and myself will provide him the input and expect a written report by the end of June, that's what it's due. So we're well on, we're good schedule on that and I'm very pleased that it's being run real well out there. So good job for Gavin, what he's doing for that program. There's nothing further on that, I'll move on to item four. This was just a disambiguation concern, I think Commissioner Williams, you had mentioned to me possibly getting with me, I think we should do that maybe this week and talk to maintenance over there, we could go over there tomorrow. They've identified some other issues and this time, remember when I approached, it was really that week that I was approached by the issues with the, what I would call the west side of the facility towards the parking lot? We really didn't notice anything on the east side and you could tell a floor was bucking in that, what I just called the northwest corner. I remember seeing that when we were doing the hearings down there in the gym. They've come back to, since come back to me and communicated that it's starting to show on the east side of the facility enough so much that, and that's with the brick facade and windows that are starting to lean as if that, that brick exterior facade is moving on both sides. And what they're telling me is, is it's very similar with these piers that you see in between these walls, is basically there's no block in between, it's just back-to-back brick. So if there's some undermining of a footer, there's nothing structural about those bricks in that case. And so they felt it enough, and again, we're gonna go and do an assessment, myself, again, further this week, they felt it enough that they closed that preschool down on that side because of the... And that's probably a good thing for them to do because they've had a JuTech engineer, a structural engineer, I got hooked up with the people that are doing the work over at the school, structural engineering that's over there, they've been running tests and taking soil samples. They've put these devices into the masonry that they can, that gives them an option to be able to come back and test. And within two days, they've come back to look at those, it's just a maintenance. The engineer put the, these expansion devices in and the school's able to go back and check. And in two days, they've already seen the masonry movement on the brick. And so they're pressing forward, as I said, a little bit of the information that I provided. They wanna get, do some sonar, ground penetrating sonar on, under the gym to see why the slab or whatever's moving under the floor. So they're gonna have to pull some flooring up in order to get that machine to work. And right now, with this testing that they're doing and that ground penetrating sonar is about ten thousand dollars, they're already contracting with a provider to be able to do those services. So I probably, my feeling is there's something going on in several different places and not just one place when it comes to the gym with all the issues that are happening. So please.
What, besides that, they care, is any of you still decent with that right now?
No, they pretty much closed it down there. Yeah, they don't want anything operating in it and my suggestion would be to also take it off and just keep people away from the building. I think safe is better than sorry, quite honestly. We better know what it's doing before we, you know, think that something's, you know, not gonna happen.
Is the facade, like peeling off of the interior wall?
And that's the thing, it's one facade that's built in between the, and on the outside of these two big concrete structures and laminate beams that hold the way to the roof and the rest of the facility. And it's built basically in between those and it's, it's not really a wall from what they're describing to me, it's two sections of brick, almost like you see here, that have just been laid out and then they put the windows, it's the only thing they're really holding up is the windows at the top. And so what it's doing is, because I'm saying that I believe the footer is moving, it's losing its structural integrity and where, when you see those masonry lines, that can very well, they're not made to go viral, they have downforce. So as soon as that changes, that structural integrity, they're not gonna be able to go viral, it just does come apart. And that's what it looks like it's doing.
Well, if, just a suggestion, you might want, if they're gonna rope that off, they might wanna rope off the space outside of the building where one of those walls just opened and collapsed. It wasn't the fact that somebody is in there, it's a danger, it's also the fact that somebody can see them outside of it.
Absolutely. That was our concern, these are very tall walls, they don't need to be within that vicinity of that structure or facility. And that was the big driving force of closing the preschool and that playground, which is right on, right next to the building, to make sure. So they moved the office, that preschool office out there and it will be used in that facility for anything else. And even during football season, they weren't using it, they were using the pool for locker room. So until we get some answers back from the engineers, the good thing is they have people that are working it now. I asked when they were bringing the ground, some are waiting to get that information passed so they can see what's happening. It's amazing to see what's moved in the floor and you don't really know, okay, is it the, my first inclination is a builder is normally your concrete slab doesn't move. You have a floating floor, which is what it's supposed to be to keep it from doing those bowings against the wall. But when they went to put, for one, for probably two weeks when they were working with the volleyball net, they could get the pipe, there's a little place in the floor that you can open up and you can bring the pipe down and put it in the, in the place where it holds it. And then they couldn't even get it in it after whatever's moving, the top of floor or the concrete floor. It's something like I've never seen in Southern New York, you're saying that. You could not get those pipes in those holes from two, from, oh, just two weeks to the change of the way they're moving. So it's enough to have a concern that, I told them, obviously, we, you know, keep me informed, we'll do whatever we need to do as far as county's concerned. So we'll keep you up to date on all things that's going on there. Yeah, yeah, I'll be here, so either before or after, whatever. There's nothing further on that, I'll touch a little bit on the sanitation department. Gavin did mention that, as he said, unfortunately, the brand new Mack truck didn't get struck by light. The good news is he, as he alluded to, we actually had the company, Chili's Truck Service or Truck Center came out and towed it the same day, they hauled it back the same day. So we've had it ever since the situation happened. We cleared everything for insurance to make sure they could go ahead and work on the vehicle and make the repairs. So far, as he said, there's a sensor issue or could be two sensors. I don't know anything about the bed, they were checking the two different parts of the truck. It's the truck and the cab and it's electronics and then the bed is by another company who does the packer. And when it first happened to the truck, the packer wasn't working. Right now, the report back from the center is they're not finding anything else wrong with the truck other than those couple of things, but they're waiting on that inspection from the people that did the bed to come back. So that's a good thing. And also, something that's of note is, she's thinking, the lady at the center's thinking it should still fall under that thirty-day warranty. And so that could potentially be there at all as far as insurance coverage is concerned. Either way, we're having the truck fixed and hope to be as soon as possible.
The warranty's on the packer.
Yeah, the warranty and on the packer and the truck should still fall under that thirty days warranty. There's no questions on that. The last item and document that you should see is an invoice for summer camp, a summer camp invoice. The price for the use of the pool for the summer camp is two fifty. This will be for three days a week and certified lifeguard will be available. The school paid two hundred and fifty dollars for this in twenty-twenty. We'll afford a pre-charge on the school, two hundred and fifty dollars for their summer camp this year.
Count the money?
Yeah.
Doctor?
Nothing further for me on the manager, county manager side, I'd like to move on to the project manager update, the projects that's been going on. I actually would have loved to have given a, an update to the, to the folks that were here, but they, they had some other things on their mind, but I wanted to reassure them that we're, with the projects that are coming up, that we'll, we are working hard for the county and for the Justice Center, I'll, I'll touch on that. I'll, I'll move down the list here, and the first thing I'll talk on is the RDA Moose Branch subdivision. Good news again, I just wanted to report, we were authorized a, I'll leave it there once you get this done. We were authorized about $470, $10,000 additional money from the Dogland Health Grant, which is exciting, that means the project can go ahead in full. We received the documentation, is why I'm recording at this time, there was a little bit of error on who they were sending it to, it's not Grand County, it should be the RDA and the chairman of that board. So I sent that back and waited for that documentation. That should be awarded and be able to start the rural development project here pretty quick and awarded in full, which is exciting to make, to keep it down in that form of housing, which is another thing that can go along with the programs that we're trying to provide for this town.
The stuff, it's already been bid out, right?
Well, yeah, it's all part of it, everything, the actual contract was bid out, but we went into negotiations with the contractors because it was way higher than what we had budgeted. So it was for everything there. So there's a building that needs to be downed, and there's some asbestos in it, so we included that, the basement as well, so. With this additional money, this, this goes from potentially having six lots to the full 13, which brings that cost per lot down, and makes it more, more attractive to people who own fires. So I'm just excited to be able to provide that. I'll touch on the cemetery department and the recreation department, I'm touching on those, just to report that we, the engineered plans for those buildings were delivered this week. So we had the engineered plans, and obviously, they're still on track to be here in September. So I just wanted to provide that, we're working with the company, they are providing all the information that we need to go forward and have those things. That's good news there. The next one would be, and you'll see in front of me, the first set of paperwork that has WNC contracting. This is Grand County Board of Elections new office renovation. I wanted to report that as a 13A, and if you guys want to have a chance to walk through the, what we've done back there, pretty much at no cost, other than maybe some equipment or some tool costs, rental. We pretty much got the demolition 90% complete back there, the whole facility, where the Board of Elections is, looks really good, we got it down. The floors, the, the whole tile's been taken straight up, all the ACT, the drywall walls are out, we're all the way down to the block. And other than, the reason why I say 90% on the demo, is I wanted to leave some of those walls up until we ask somebody, until I have a contractor hired to commence forward with the actual construction work, so that we can, we can help, and with the additional, there's a little bit of wall to take down, and obviously, some plumbing, that concrete cutting, that's plumbing that'll have to be done to get the bathroom ready. And so I say all that to say, I've, I've almost reached my end to be able to try and find even contractors that bid on it to give us an idea of what they would charge us to do it. So what I've provided is a quote estimate from Western North Carolina Contracting, which is Jeremy Lunsford. And of course, this is, this is what they're coming up with, and his is, basically, at 100 days, or about 16 weeks roughly, at 54, six, comes up to about $3,400 a week. And that's for a full crew, and I'm figuring it at about six days a week, them working, going, you know, and that, their portion of it, again, this is more of an estimate than a quote than it is anything else, because we're not contracting it out, and we don't know for sure. And it being the project that, when we start cutting that floor, we're running to when we're doing the planning. But that'll include, they'll be hired to pretty much do all of the architectural finishes, cut the door in, the concrete on the outside, framing, painting, and then we'll work with them on the insulation as well, too. A couple options there. And then I had another one, and I tried to find licensed and insured contractors to, to make sure we're employing anything that might potentially happen, instead of somebody that may not be. It certainly helps the project to be working, you know, forward, to have those necessary safety actions in place. The next one is Mitch Crowe, who is saying, it's basically covering the same scope of work, and theirs came up to around $4,500 a week, $4,500 per week with their labor force, with a little bit, yeah, a little bit shorter duration, but still came up with a little bit more money, which is part of what his charge, I believe, he could wait for. I would ask the commissioners to, if they would be willing to decide on one of the other of these contractors, see if I can award them the form, if they can start the work in the Board of Elections as soon as possible.
So, they're being a secret contract, it's probably plus on a 16-week?
Pretty much, that's what I had for this 100 days, thinking of it as six days a week. I think that's probably excessive, but if you figure it out a weekly amount, it comes in a little less than what Mr. Crowe.
Mr. Crowe does, but what I wanted to do, I thought we got to move more down the contract.
He does, he does, I took off that amount, a certain amount, that was put in for demo, and let him know that, that was demo was by others, and that's where I came up with $4,500. But yeah, he's aware, it's basically start from where we are now.
What's other work?
Now, that would be, this is all labor cost for the duration of the project, the materials, we would purchase the materials, that's what go forward. See, in the intent to save from that, paying that percentage on the materials.
Is that the volume that's in the drawing room, spot next?
Pretty much, real close.
Before that?
Yeah, well, yeah, it's almost, it's almost hard, I'll be honest, it's almost hard to make a price material at this stage.
WNC contracting, US land, will be cheapest of the two?
I do.
I'm going to notice they removed the WNC contract. Yeah, I'm not, that's right.
Move on to the next package you should find. I had three people that were going to provide civil quotes to do the site work for the 200 millions. One of them backed out just to provide the information, so I have Grand County Land Company that provides the site work quote, and Loving Contracting that provided the site work quote. And they did this further design for the civil plans that we had done for the project. So I've, I've asked the board to consider awarding a site survey or site civil work to one of the contractors. As you can see, from Grand County Land, the Recreation Site Building total, that follows the scope of work and the plans of the year, that is $26,000, $215,000. If you look on Loving Contracting, the rec area part would be where you see, right under the L, it says quote two rec area, theirs is $11,700. And then, as you go through, as you look at the same, Grand County Land Cemetery Grounds Maintenance Building, $8,035. Loving Contracting under the first line, it says quote cemetery, the total would be $6,500. It appears that loving is low on love.
These are the two, cheap ones.
That's what it appears. I would ask the board to consider awarding it to a contractor, and so we can get started. The intention would be to try and get the site work and the slabs in sometime, as I do my back planning. From a contractor's commercial perspective, I'd like to have about 28 days of carrying time on that slab. So that would put it, if I did it in September, roughly, if I was doing it at the beginning of July, and to begin, or end of July, beginning of August, or anytime previous to that. That's my target, to be able to award this, get the concrete project awarded as well, and be tracking to have everything ready on site when the building is dropped on each site, the, the erector can come up and start putting the building all together.
That means, we're just actually doing the next budget year.
Well, this is, we've already attached the capital project ordinance for these projects, so the capital project ordinance just carries forward. And if we're pretty well settled on these projects that we have, we can now begin the process of getting the loan package together for this school project, as well as this component, combining financing. So that money will flow from those loan proceeds. In the meantime, we can pull the money out of that, you know, to flow back. So we'll come out of our operating budget.
It's about 60 days before this is, story of 60 days, you could have any more or less.
Yeah, more or less.
Would they rather do the quarter?
Yes, I, I've, I've not had any, haven't told me anything, I'm pretty confident on everything I've lived with. Yeah. That's fair. I mean, I've been willing, as long as I don't have a messy site, I'd let them start next week, I just don't need silt running off the environmental. And I can, I can work with that, because they're not large sites, I can fix that. We did do erosion control on the plants, so they'll be responsible for that under construction, but you can't leave silt pits out for, I think you're supposed to be checking it every 30 days or something, it has to be inspected.
So keep it up, or I'll put our glove.
That's true, that's true, two really good sites that are almost ready to go.
I'll make the most of it, you said, love and support. What you have to say?
Touch on the school real quick. That project is, is still really good and underway, that metal building that they put together is up, and they're using it. And they put that metal building up to tear down the whole building behind us, to take all that stuff out and put in. That old building is already gone, and they're digging the, on the site to start their foundation footers, so that project's really moving forward pretty good. Although, they dealt with a lot of rain as well themselves, so. I want to touch on, I think the last thing that I wanted to speak on was the, the, because they brought up the question of the Justice Center, we are pressing as hard forward as we can, and I think I said something, I want to make sure everybody understands, the intent is to build, it's about 58,000 square foot facility that allows the Justice Center, which would be the jail, the sheriff's office, and all judicial services, which includes clerk court, probation, child services, or not child services, but I think minor probation, and a couple other offices, magistrate and the DA would all be housed in the facility. We are putting together, again, and I want to put caution, it takes time for these designs for these buildings, this is not, because of the jail and the dynamic that's involved with the jail, it's, there's a lot more construction that normally would be if there wasn't a jail there, dealing with electronic systems and surveillance and security and certain things that are done at the outside facility. So it's going to take time to get it through design. We are in the process right now of putting together our request for quotes for acceptance of, what we want to do is put together a board and accept the qualifications of an A and E team, of who we've put together, and we'll decide that within the board, whether we want to pick the best out of four, best out of five, or whatever number we come up with, then provide them with the information, and then they bid on doing the A and E. And we're looking at doing that, we want to be able to have that together by the end of this month, but that out, or at the beginning of the June. And then, from that, it should take maybe hopefully another month to be able to get to that end, but I do anticipate the design to take, you know, at least a year to get it ready to go out to contracting. That's my anticipation. So we're, I'm thinking 2023 is what we're hoping, somewhere in that end, towards the end of 20, get over to the end of 2023, possibly out to contract. Just wanted to provide that update. I think I've touched almost everything I wanted to speak about, unless there's anybody having questions for me. That's all I have.
Thank you. I wonder how much the, the cost of it was increased between now and 2023, $180,000 in a year.
And they were nice enough in that package that I provided, they, I think was it, I think they had it out to 2023, they gave us an estimate for that percentage every year that, what that takes between now and then, yeah. At 20, 22 million up to like 24 million, possibly, potentially if it goes out to 2024, 2025. And again, that's, a lot of those numbers were before a lot of what we're seeing now. Yep. And I just want to caution everybody, there's a lot of witnesses in those. It's amazing. That's, that's all I have, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Garland, you got a time that you could pull up on? I do, and I also have some information related to our city G grant and our everywhere settlement, but a couple of those things will come later on in the agenda, as well as our American Rescue Act, and I have a minimum to the procurement policy. Our general fund cash balance, we closed the month of April with $9,950,750 in the general fund as a reconciled balance. That is down a bit from this time last month, about $600,000, of which about $278,000 of it's written in one check to the garbage truck. It got straight by law. That money will come back into the general fund in the next several weeks through our USDA financing. I only worked three years at that name, and when we got the news out of the garbage truck, I worked three years in the name. We are about $782,000 ahead of this time last year in our general fund account, so I'm pleased to report that. Bearing in mind that the general fund, while it's there for our operating needs, there's quite a few restrictions on it, interstate mandated, so some of that money I can't touch, so I just want to make that known for the record. Our capital projects fund, we got a little over $2.1 billion, almost $20 million in that fund. And then the capital project fund for the school is the sales tax that we put back, $114,000. I've paid about, I've paid one estimate on the school, which was about $25,000, which I pulled out, another, part, 25% of that came out of the general fund, the rest came out of the school bill grant. I've got another one that's laying there to pay, it's about $101,000, which $25,000 will come out of the county coffers for that, and the balance will come out of the bill grant. At this point, I've paid, I've had to pay the school bond, payment which, that would pay off in 2023, but then we're also able to use the 524 sales tax money, so right now, I'm using the 524 sales tax money to fund these estimates, which is what the board committed to when the school was asked to apply for the grant. If you look on page two, you'll see our property tax collections, we collected $62,000 in our current year taxes, real property taxes, and almost $20,000 in prior year taxes, which is a pretty big little bit ahead of this time last year, or last year, we got $82,000 in real property taxes in total, this time last year was $51,500. Our DMV taxes were very healthy for the month of April, as compared to this time last year, we got $65,000 in BTS taxes versus $47,000. But if you recall, this time last year, the state put BTS taxes on hold. state put BTS taxes on hold. You could pay them voluntarily, but not everybody did. They dated it off a three month deferment. So that's one reason that those taxes went, showed that much of a difference. If you'll turn to page four, you'll see that we've collected so far a little over 7.1 million dollars in our real property, total real property taxes, that's late taxes and current taxes, and a little over half a million dollars in our DMV taxes. We're 209,000 ahead of this time last year in real and 58,000 in DMV. I'm very happy to report that our tax collection percentage is 96.6 plus this time last year, 95.0. That helps me as I'm doing the budget. So if I can have a higher property tax collection rate, that allows me to budget more of our total tax money. You'll turn on page five, you'll see that our gross receipts for the month of April were a million, 41,000. That's a little bit better than this time last year. Of course, we had shut everything down this time last year. Our expenditures were 1.7 million dollars versus 1.3 this time last year. However, this time last year, we had people that were, that were basically furloughed for the COVID, but also that 278,000 is included in that 1.7. And so if we can close on that, check of the USDA date yesterday, and they're working on getting the package together to Attorney Coward for closing, then hopefully I'll be able to get that money back into the county coffers before the fiscal year end. Our total, if you look on the bottom of page six, you'll see that our total surplus for the year to date is a little over $2 million. This time last year, 1.1 million. That, as you know, as you've been missing for a little while, that is a sliding slope for the next two months. And I hope it'll be a little bit better than we did this time last year since the surplus, because that will allow us to do more good things with people. If you look on page seven, sales taxes still staying healthy. We collected, this does not include a 4% sales tax for the courthouse project. We got 174,000 in sales taxes. This time last year, 157,000. We've collected a little over $300,000 more in sales tax this year than last year. So I'm real happy with that. And the 524 expansion, we're up about 16, well, overall, we're in our sales tax worth of about 16%. We have collected nearly a half a million dollars in our 4% sales tax for the year. I hope to hit half a million that is rolling into our capital reserve. We have, on page six, or page eight, we've collected almost half a million dollars in taxes since we began for closures in 2013. Right now, our total taxes due, the accounting, current and back taxes are 605,000. So our tax collection department is working really hard this time last, or this last month. They started doing the bank attachments and of course, they've been doing garbage and so along. Any questions only this part of the financial board? Next page, you'll see your budget for the year. We should have 16% left in the budget. We right now have 22% for the year of county law. We have a few departments that are running a little bit ahead. I did want to make note, if you look on the gathering body, made a budget, you'll see, you'll be like, oh my goodness, what have we done? We've put budget way high. That's because we're now paying the maintenance fees on equipment for urgent care. And then in addition, the cost, we're seeing more sales tax than what we anticipated. That's a transfer out into the capital project funds, we had to budget for that. So that's very explainable. The election board is running just a little bit ahead of itself, but they've gotten several grants. And once they finish speeding those grants down, we're doing a budget for that as well. Public buildings is way ahead of itself just because we had to do the HI work in the P and J building. And just a couple of items for the health department. We've got the generator on order, the backup generator on order. I ordered that in December the 29th. It'll probably always before we get that in. Nice to learn what I got from Scotty's. But just some amazing commentary on the times we didn't end up now. Any questions on the budget? Just a note about the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. We have made our request for our funds. We had to go into a portal. I had to do everything with facial recognition software to get in there so that they knew I wanted to, I said all this. I was a little bit nervous about that because I didn't get my progress license pictures, about 10 years old, and I aged. Like, when's it gonna work? They say that they accepted our application last Wednesday. They said it would take four working days to where the process, I was checking on the application before it came into the meeting. They're still processing. I don't bother for a minute. It's going to take them four days. I think it did them like 40 days because it took them about that long to get four. So anyway, this money is what they said that Grand County Board Stadium will be $1,639,656. That'll come in over two fiscal years. So the first allocation will be 819,828. Said it will come sometime in next fiscal year. This is highly restricted money. And as I mentioned, it probably under 85 pages of regs that I have to slog through. One area though, that I think may be of interest is that they will allow for broadband expansion as part of their infrastructure money. So that might be something that the board will want to consider as these groups that are working the great grant, or trying to expand broadband in the county. So that might be one of the real big uses of the money. Beyond broadband, it's very maniacal. So we only kind of parse through these rates so that we can make sure, number one, that we spend it legally, and number two, that we get the best thing out of our butt to help the people in this county. Because this is, we'll probably never see this kind of money coming into this county again. I would like to ask the board to give me permission to open a special revenue bank account for this money. So it's not coming into the general fund. For one thing, it's going to be a requirement under the grant that we have a special revenue fund. This way, I know exactly what's flowing through and it'll be very easy to audit because not only will our local auditors have to audit, but we'll have the Fed's coming in and auditing these funds. So I would need a board's approval to do that. Okay, thank you. I do have this part of your packet, the report, quarterly report from Body of Health. That's our union health agency, L and D, in our region. And if you look on the third page of the report, you'll see that as of March 31st, Body of Health had 16.9 million dollars in spendable cash after they've taken out all of their restrictions. And if you know, pre-COVID, they were in the red on spendable cash. And I think the CARES Act has assisted them being able to, to do that, to do better. I also have an amendment to our Grand County procurement policy. We follow CFR 200 for how we get procurement for federal and state dollars. We can have an update where we can expand the amount that we're able to, to do procurement without having to do informal seal bids. They've raised it to $250,000 for projects. Anything above that, we have to do seal bids on. Anything below that, we can do like quotes and informal procedures. And I would ask the board to pass this amendment so that that loosens our ability to, to work more efficiently in our procurement policy. And it will help us as we're working through these NRCS funds for the snowboard fund. So if the board, if it pleases the board to update our procurement policy. And just a quick word of update on that project, the NRCS Little Snowboard Fund. We had an initial call with our engineer today. And because of the way the government piecemeal the money to us, they said we had 220 days to do the entire project from September. So we had a deadline of June 6th, which obviously is not going to happen because they didn't fund 70% of the project until the end of February. So I contacted NRCS and they said, well, we need you to file for an extension. So the engineer helped us with all the timelines and so forth. And since Commissioner Eller is the authorized representative, I got up there for him this time so we can see that in the morning. And he feels like that the whole project, the credit bank and the clearing and the snag can be finished with all the permitting and all the things we have to jump through, clean out that creek by the end of November. So I took that on Commissioner Eller's deal. And that's all I have for the money.
The American Recovery Money cannot be used as a plant or normal good.
Exactly. The only thing that it can be used to help in our budget is if we have losses in revenue. So my job is going to be taking the trial balance and all revenue as of, I think, March the 20th of 2019, against March the 20th of 2020. Whatever areas we've lost revenue, we can use that money for. But it's going to be few and far between because I had to do a report to the state in February of this year, and it was few and far between because counties did last. So exactly, we cannot supplant funds.
You can tell by the sales tax figures.
Yes.
Some tax figures.
Yes.
We've been very good. We have been very fortunate for this. You employers and, see the sales tax, the tax, stay up, or what we ever expect. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. I don't mind hearing those kind of financial retirements. So that make them cry.
Yes.
It's been a while. You want a moment?
No, thank you.
You got a lot of time, I thought I said.
I tried to mark it. I think that you have.
Look out.
Okay.
Everybody, get lots of money because she's got.
All right.
I'm not going to lose time. You want me to stand there? I suppose you can. Also, why don't you all have trouble? I guarantee you.
My name's Hank Bitchell, and I've been emailing and corresponding and stuff. And it's been about the sound. I can't hear you guys. We want to go by the recordings at home because this time of night, we're usually there. Now, I was up at four this morning. I bet I got a nap. Don't feel sorry. And I actually would listen to this when I'm sharp, about four o'clock in the morning, and my sister will do it. But we can't hear you. We can't hear you. I just love you, Mr. Wiggins. I just do. But I'm telling you right now, you've got to do something so I can hear you. Because it is like off the chart frustrating. My sister, I mean, she slammed the phone down after telling me that I can't listen to the network. So I have to send out emails and tell people because that's my commitment to this, is I want to, I want to be watching everybody. We're going to the school board meetings. You'll hear about us because we're kind of overbearing. But it's not that we want to be. It's that we're real passionate about what we believe. And I mean no disrespect, but I just see a lot of, you guys are great at admin, administrative things. And so I'm going to compliment you on that. There's other things like I can hear you very well. I can hear you guys. I could really hear you today. And I heard you. But you guys, I can't hear. And it's no offense to you, but if you're going to be here, we got to hear you. We got to hear you. And I don't want to email this poor chick again about the subject because I feel like I'm hounding her. But when I sent out an email asking questions of you guys, just because I just wanted to have like a little dialogue, just one, just one email. Mr. Wiggins, you responded back to me. And so did you link her. No one else did, including.
I don't email. I don't text.
And I hear you because I'm saying some stuff. So maybe I could present you with like a little document.
Email me.
Give me a chance for you. That's fine. People do that to me. That's why I email for. And I did email. And that's because I just want to, I want to establish ahead of time that we're here as like a watchdog. And I may just come off and she may come off like we're just overbearing jackasses. And we're not. We're naturally nice people. We conduct ourselves normally. But I don't trust anybody anymore for anything because I just learned now over these last year. And even before that, I knew you can't trust people with just what they're saying. We got to see deeds. And tonight, I will say this about this group that was in here. I go hard for this because of probably the same reason all y'all do, right? But I'm going to tell you, if you don't start changing the way you're thinking, you're never going to get anywhere. And everybody told the same thing to, it's all about money. Money ain't the problem. If money was the problem, we'd already solved it. It would have been solved. There wouldn't be no more drug problem. There's so much money. We'd have no more bar. Money ain't the problem. You agree with us. So I'm going to, I'm going to get my head on straight. I don't know how serious, I don't, no offense to these people. I'm just saying, people come in and they're up a wind. And they don't really mean what they say in the morning. You know, that thing that they do at 8:00 in the morning to see how you feel then? I don't know if you guys have a lot of emotions involved, but there is a solution to that problem. I'm telling you. And if I see anyone come at me just like this little lady Patricia, I can't think of her last name, that just came at me and another lady, if I can tell when people are serious about a solution, it's a can do. I can do it. I don't really know what to do, but God already provided me the answer out. So I'm going to take it. So where is it? And this is where I start wondering about intelligence in people. They say they believe in God, but they don't show faith in it. God said, I already made a way out. I believe you. There's a way out of this. This county, I heard about this county when I worked for Mark and Sandy Fortner at, I lived in this county. I did not know these things. I was working for Sandy and Mark Fortner, and they hired some tech chick for their FCI asphalt plant. And I had to deal with this crazy woman that was on drugs all the time. And then they would all laugh. Everybody would laugh when they were in the office about how they all go to Graham County. They always go to Graham County. And I said, what? And they're all making fun of me. You don't know how easy it is to get drugs in Graham County. And I'm telling you, I've been on the board since this has gone on. So I look to leadership for the, if you're not solving the problem, it's all gone. Ask for help. Tell somebody. I told Kim, if you need help, ask. I'm not sure what to do here, Hank. You said that you could help. I may not know what to do, but I guarantee you, I guarantee you got to put the right person right in my path. And I can put them right in your path. If you care what you're saying all this stuff, I don't know whether you do or not. I don't know whether you're doing or not. I don't see you care about I can't hear. I don't, if you don't care that I can't hear. You don't care that I'm watching this thing at home and I've got a million things sitting. So I'm just saying, if you care, let's see some action. Let's see, I can hear you on this thing. So I don't have to come in here at night when I just had a trauma in my home. I had to come to this meeting because I committed. I'm just, I'm just asking, please, be understanding. You guys work for us. And don't sit in those seats if you don't care about us. Don't sit in those seats and follow the same cotton picking procedures you've followed for all these years. I love you when you're admin, but you've got to approach things from a, I can't do this. Somebody asked for the sound to be fixed four months ago. Me. And I'm still talking to somebody. I had to come here. I told Kim I'm going to come shaming everybody. Not because I want to shame you, because Not because I want to shame you, because I want you to understand, you're disrespecting me. And I don't have to be respected all the time. Doggone. This is pitiful, sitting here listening to this stuff. And you can't hear. It just sucks up a storm. So those are my comments, and I'm hoping that y'all understand. But I mean, I'm serious about resign, get out of the seat. If you don't care, then don't sit here and play games. Because I'm going to tell you, God's going to find you all out. If you're not serious, God's going to find you all out, which is why I'm standing here. If you think I wanted to do this, I got a million other things to do. Have you ever seen my face out there a few months ago? No, because I don't, I don't have to be involved in this, I didn't think. But now, yes, I do. And so if I'm going to be involved, oh, am I going to come in like a hurricane? And I'm going to pour all over this, and I'm going to pray? And I'm going to speak in tongues, and I'm going to pray in tongues? I'm that crazy wacko Christian that people think is crazy. But I'll tell you what, I've already had interactions that works. And I'm always about results. And that's what I want you all to see about. Results. We shouldn't have a drug problem in this county. This is a small town. I can come to town and get drugs. And I'm not involved in drugs, but I, I was a UPS lady in Fort Myers City for years and years, and I had to deal with all those people. It's easy to go find drugs. So I don't understand why we have this problem this big in this county. But it speaks to corruption, and you guys are our leadership. Are you doing research to find out how to fix it? I'm serious about research. I do so much research, it's ridiculous. Because I won't believe what they say. I don't believe what people tell me. I just say, that don't make no sense. Vaccines, even the COVID virus, my God, it's a 99% success rate. And we've got kids in school with a mask on, including my daughter. My granddaughter has to wear a shield, and she has a doctor's excuse not to wear it because she had lung problems before. I mean, dang gum, we have lost our ability to think in this cotton-picking world. Come under some brains, man. It's got to be thinking, research, pray about it. See what it's wearing, what's wrong. And don't be afraid to stand up when it's wrong. Because you're going to think, I'm going to be attacked like me. I might be attacked. I mean, Jacob, you show up on job sites my husband might be on. You can retaliate against my husband. I know that. I know you wouldn't. I'm not saying that. But I'm saying, I'm coming in here, I'm being real with you. I'm telling you, doing the right thing has its own reward. And we have a drug problem for too long, and all of y'all have been sitting on this board. So, ooh, I could shove it right in your lap and tell you. That pleads apart with, if it's corrupt, y'all ought to be doing something about it. I've had things said to me in my ear, and it's like, I don't want to take any more time to start figuring out who's right and wrong. I got to discern within inside of me. And this is where it starts. And I don't want to run for this cotton-picking board. I respect that. Get inside of you guys to sit here and go through this nonsense. It's got to be, I understand money's got to be handled. But we got to be about solutions. And if it ain't being solved year after year, we're doing it wrong. Oh, I can't even talk about this anymore. And if we fix the sound problem, you guys won't see me in here unless I have to be. And I'm telling you, I'm just one. There's a lot just like me that want to come in here and just have a complete meltdown. We're tired of it. The nation needs people that are leaders. And if y'all aren't leaders, get out of the seat and let's put some people in there. All right, I'm done. I ran along the number. Thank you for your time. And I promise, if we fix the problem with the sound, you don't have to keep dealing with it. All right. Thank you.
I hear you.
Yep.
I'll come. Just let her calm down.
No, why do you call? I have my own situation.
I do think the doctor lives on, but the way the problem, not around the sheriff's school, every time I run, they call out my mother. And every time I run, I've had these people that stole drugs to harm others above me.
Do I know what you're saying? I've been hearing this stuff. I will help you. I will be the one to stand on the corner. I will make some calls. I can be so in your face in any fashion you need to be. I just hope, I'm available to help anyone with a solution. I'll do the research. I can, I can. My love, we got it. We got a crowd, baby. We can help.
We got a whole group in Swing County going.
Everybody just want to help. That's why when y'all said we're talking about, you know, buttoning up to Swing County on some, well, that's funny because we started going to Swing County because we couldn't get, I'm sorry, I'm just going to say it true. We can't get people in churches, Christian people, to do a doggone thing about that. All, they act like, like they're going to do something. It's a church meeting, everybody taps themselves on the back and goes home. And then they say, it's your fault, it's your fault, it's your fault, the drugs are the problem. But if you want to know the truth, I think, none of y'all. We don't need government money. We can fix this in the churches. But you, how do you get the churches to listen? I mean, Jesus, I just, I try. I do what I can, but I don't care. I'm not going to worry.
Well, I watched him die for 30 years. I've been with you for over 30 years. And I've had a lot of horrors with him right in front. I've had a lot of horrors with his drugs. And then the overdoses, and Len's got, what, 40?
See, I'm...
Len's a medic, so he can't die under him.
Yeah. But I'm telling you guys, there are, there are places that are getting really super great results. If you're interested, you contact me. I will contact them. I mean, I would, I could just send you to someone just random because my son-in-law to Beffel over in Morganton. I think it's over by Morganton. It's called Beffel. And those people have a very high success rate. And you know what they say? Well, I'm addressing the drug. That's not even the problem. That's why all this money, you keep talking about money. Well, if you got a solution and it's actually producing results, then well, I'm for.
Yeah.
But dang gum, if they're getting good results, why don't we go with them? And put money towards that. And I don't, I don't even talk about government. I'm really not. There's a lot of people that want to contribute to this. I mean, you could just get a million people on board just because they went through all this stuff. And little bits of money can make big money.
I would like to, I'll make one comment. I need to get with the paper because it'll have to be a bill. If we're talking about sound on Facebook, which we do, is that what your, your Facebook page you're doing the sound with?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I'd have to get with them because it doesn't really have anything to do with the county. And if you're producing that, then we need to work together with you on how we can make this sound a little bit better.
So that's what I bring to me, is why don't you guys have something? Oh, I'm sorry, am I doing her? This is why I write this.
I don't like the...
Why does this, why does this be recorded?
They're not on your side.
No, I, I, I wasn't quite finished. I'm saying, I'm offering to work with them. This Grant Star would make things better.
And he's already said, he's all for it too. But if the people don't wear microphones, they ain't going to pick it up. You're very busy here.
Unless he's got an Instagram live from a sound perspective, they're terrible about making it sound.
Yeah, he's picking up everywhere.
I wonder why we as a county can't get these either on an account site? I don't think we should be having to go to Grant Star to watch our county's meeting. It's what I write this.
We did during the pandemic because that's the first time I tried this. But you guys have something on something.
We were doing conference calls. We played in the air then either.
I played here. I had to be on my own for the cuss the whole time. I mean, I want to cuss.
How long do we have to do this on? Or is it going to be bad?
Yeah, but see, I hear stuff not...
Here? Six months, eight months?
I don't know if yours is working. See, I know that Jacob's was working, and he wasn't last time I don't think that I was here. And I can hear you kind of, but I definitely hear you. I hear you easily. I'm on that. Mr. Wiggins, I...
We will definitely work.
There's a reason I don't have mine on today.
You don't want to know. We're going to, I'll have a microphone on my face here shortly. I'll tell them myself, I've got it on in the bathroom.
I already, I already got it.
I'm tired of being entertained. I'm just trying to assure you, we'll work on it and try to make things better. First time I go on conversation in the bathroom with somebody here.
Because I have an accident meeting for us. Right now, I am something.
And we're trying to...
I will watch you far. I want to be able to hear it all, and then we start emailing these girls is what happens when we have questions.
Yeah, we're trying to be totally respectful of you guys, but I don't feel very respected when I can't hear after this four months of acting this way, seriously. So I'm fine with it, though. I forgive you.
We'll try. I'll be better.
Thank you.
I'm benefiting Kim. Kim always says, bitch, my time, bitch, my time.
Yeah, I know she knows you do.
We're trying to tell them to us to be sure that's why we're here.
My last letter was pretty tough, and she can say that back to me like, bless her heart.
I work for the people.
Yeah, I understand. I felt like I hated having to do it. But okay, so we have questions for you, Keith, though. We got to talk to you, because you don't hate me. But we got that.
You talk to people that fight. I'm still on a meeting.
I get you. I'm fine with it. I can hear it from just my ears, and I'm just as good.
I'll read. I've got a cell phone that left here. It don't count, or...
Yeah. My husband's...
If they call over, I've got a cell phone. I won't.
All right, so we good?
We're going on the...
I'm really exhausted right now.
Let's see if we have discussion items.
Yes.
I was exhausted. I got here, I have to go.
One of our first items, the releases for $1,316, it's seven stands. Seven, say.
I'll hug.
All right. Next item, the discussion to allow AT&amp;T to use the hyperpower. We put that on discussion items. If that ends up being like contract or criteria information, we want to take that into closed section. Just want to put that out there. So we may want to move that into closed section. Okay. And the next item, approval of CDVG COVID duplication benefits policy.
Yes. This is more of the paper chase for our CDVG COVID grant. We had our onboarding meeting after many trials and tribulations to get callers to realize that they have a secret paperwork. We finally had our onboarding meeting last Wednesday. One of the policies that we have to put in place at Graham County duplication of benefits policy, basically, Reader's Digest thumbnail version of this policy is that we cannot double dip federal funds. So for instance, if we, one of the costs of money in this COVID grant is like $56,000 to do some rehab on our senior center kitchen, maybe a little bit more than that. I'm probably getting the numbers confused in my head. If we had already gotten a grant to do that work, we couldn't use the COVID money. Okay? We cannot double dip. Otherwise, I go to jail. And I don't want to go to jail. So I would ask the board to please approve this policy. This will stay in place for any other CDVG grant money we receive. So will be in place for future grants. I just need the board to approve this policy.
Approve it.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
All right, very good. Next opioid settlement and county resolution for state settlement.
Okay, as you're aware, a little over a year ago, I was managing what they were, we now call PAPP, we, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. It was five commissioners, five county managers, and five county attorneys to hammer out an agreement with the North Carolina Attorney General's Office on the national opioid settlement. They are almost to the point of settling with the big pharma in reference to them being pill mills. And the total settlement is estimated to be in the billions, like the hundreds of billions of dollars. North Carolina is scheduled to get about $650 million over an 18-year period. And I think I sent the commissioners any help. That will be divvied out into two counties. When we began the process, the attorney, the attorney general wanted all the money to be held on the state level. We said, oh, no, 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 because it's not a state level problem. It is a floating problem. And their comment back to us was, well, counties are not good at managing their money. This was after being 19, having a child. And so thankfully, I was able to pull my finance hat on. And I was able to help educate the Attorney General's Office about all the levels and layers of accountability that local governments have to follow. And so we were able to come to an agreement with the Attorney General's Office whereby 80% of the funds will go to the counties. 15% will be held by the state. And then there'll be 5% put in a contingency fund that counties and cities can get special grants out of. Graham County's portion per year is estimated to be in the neighborhood of $100,000 per year. That's not a whole lot. But you know, as I was sitting here listening, they were nodding at the front of the salaries, home portion salaries right there. We have a MOA in place with the Attorney General's Office that the Attorney General will then take to the national settlement. The Attorney General cannot sit at the table at the national settlement without the MOA in place. Each county is being asked to sign onto the MOA in the form of a resolution. And the resolution, I'll read the resolution, it's pretty short, thankfully. It says, whereas as of 2019, the opioid epidemic has taken the lives of more than 16,500 North Carolinians, poor families apart and ravaged communities from the mountains to the coast. Whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has compounded the opioid crisis, increasing levels of drug misuse, addiction, and overdose death. And whereas the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention estimates the total economic burden of prescription opioid misuse alone in the United States is $78.5 billion a year, including the cost of healthcare, lost productivity, addiction treatment, and criminal justice involvement. And whereas certain counties and municipalities in North Carolina join with thousands of local governments across the country to file lawsuits against opioid manufacturers and pharmaceutical distribution companies and hold those companies accountable for their misconduct. And whereas representatives of local North Carolina governments, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, the North Carolina Department of Justice have negotiated and prepared a memorandum of agreement to provide for the equitable distribution of any proceeds from a settlement of national opioid litigation in the state of North Carolina to individual local governments. And whereas local governments in the state of North Carolina anticipate a settlement and the national opioid litigation to be forthcoming. And whereas by signing onto the MOA, the state and local governments maximize North Carolina's share of opioid settlement funds to ensure the needed resources reach communities once a negotiation is finalized as quickly, effectively, and directly as possible. And whereas it is evident to all North Carolinians, for local governments, including Graham County and its citizens, to sign onto the MOA and demonstrate solidarity in response to the opioid epidemic and maximize the share of opioid settlement funds received both by the state and this county to help alleviate the harm. And whereas the MOA directs substantial resources over multiple years to other counties on the front lines for the opioid epidemic, while ensuring that those resources are used in an effective way to address the crisis. Now, therefore, be it resolved, Graham County hereby approves the memorandum of agreement between the state of North Carolina and local governments on proceeds relating to the settlement of opioid litigation and any subsequent settlement funds that may come into North Carolina as a result of the opioid crisis. Furthermore, Graham County authorizes a county manager or county attorney to take such measures as necessary to comply with the terms of the MOA and receive any settlement funds, including executing any documents related to the allocation of opioid settlement funds and settlement of lawsuits related to this matter. Be it further resolved, copies of this resolution and sign in the MOA be sent to opioiddocs@ncdoj.gov as well as forwarded to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners at Communications at NCACC-ROR. And if it's pleasing to the board, the board will adopt this tonight, this 18th day of May 2021, as well as sign a signature page at which there will be a requirement for the towns of Robbinsville, Santigua, and Fontana to sign as well. There is some dispute in place because out of that settlement, the federally, the national settlement folks are, have allocated, carved out so many billions of dollars to go toward attorney fees. And there is some of dispute because some of the litigating counties attorneys are saying that's not going to be enough. However, the NCACC is working really closely with the Department of Justice and the Attorney General's Office to get that resolved because there's contractual issues as well, but they are urging all the county counties to sign up on this because if this falls apart, then North Carolina will get zero. And local governments will get zero. And so as I stated on the calls, it's not going to matter if it falls apart because what times zero, anything times zero equals zero, is part of the truth. what times zero, anything times zero equals zero, as far as attorney fees are concerned. So, they are urging this board, these boards, to sign up to this MOA. And I'm recommending that as well, having been sitting on the field.
All right. Next item, where no actions needed, just make everyone aware Memorial Day, holiday, May 31st for local governments. The next item, a decision on who to attend the NCACC annual conference, which I think is in August, but it's in August this year.
I will say that, as a former county manager, it's a very, I was telling manager Moreno, it's, it's a very good conference for the county manager to attend as well. If Commissioner Orson Malley attends, when I attended a couple of years ago before the pandemic, that's how I was able to be educated as to all that MOU stuff with the ESS and help us unravel that issue, so.
But even though we adopted to have seven more persons, they probably send everyone there, just... With these women...
Absolutely. That's okay. So, I'm here to serve, so whatever you want, you can make great advice. All right. If that's settled, we'll move on. Is there any new or old visits that need to be discussed, discussed, I mean, discussion items before we go to close session?
I don't see a problem. Okay. Sorry about that. Maybe motion to go to the other section, TS 143311A1356, through confidential information. Attorney, private, personal health contract. Give me the break. I'll vote. I'll vote. Need motion for three employees, leave, is that right? Two. And one have the M L A in effect. Motion. All vote. Do we have any... Make the motion, make the jar.
Make him do a motion.
Make it to the jar. All that trouble, just quick.